All right, we're gonna get started here. So, good evening. I'd like to call to order the City of West Bend Licensing Board for August 16th at 6:25 PM. Note that we do have a quorum and we have two items on our agenda, the first being approval of minutes, the Licensing Board regular meeting minutes for August 2nd.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none, all is favor, so don't be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And number two, our only agenda item for consideration is the extension of premise for an addition to the Sidewalk Cafe to include a deck area at 302 North Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all is favor, so don't be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And having no further business for the Licensing Board, adjourn by the call of the Chair.
I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We have two items on the agenda. First one is approval of minutes of August 2nd, 2021.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, we have motion second. Any discussion or corrections? If none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carried. Item number two, approval of long-term storm water maintenance agreement, Legend Storage. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This item is another approval for long-term storm water maintenance agreement. Every time the city issues a storm water management permit, in accordance with our MS4 permit from the DNR, we enter into an agreement with the property owner to clearly define the storm water management facilities and the rights and responsibilities and the maintenance requirement. And so this is another one of these agreements for Legend Storage. It's a storage building facility development along University Drive. And I have attached the agreement for signature and recording if the Board and Council approve.
Second.
Any questions for Max? There are none. We have a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Max. Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn.
And we're actually early for once, by about three minutes, so we'll take a little All right, thank you all for that brief pause. And I would now like to call to order the City of West Bend Common Council meeting for August 16th, 6:30. Note that we do have a quorum with all all of them present to counter for. Please join me to rise and pledge allegiance.
[inaudible]
Thank you. I'll note that we have 11 items on our agenda. The first meeting approval of minutes, the County Council regular meeting minutes for August 2nd.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alan and Mal. Any questions or corrections? Seeing none, all is favor, so don't be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I'll need a motion to consent agenda consisting of items two and three.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I'd like to ask that item two be pulled out of the consent agenda. I have several questions.
Sure, we can take them one at a time then. And we'll start with two consenting extension of premise for an addition to the Sidewalk Cafe to include a deck area 302 North Main Street. You want to take it away with a question?
We need to get a motion and a second first.
We don't need to, but sure, we can entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. All right, take it away.
Yeah, two questions. First is my understanding is the extension of premise requires us that the area be visible from inside the bar. And it appears that the deck is not actually visible. It's around the corner and not visible from inside the bar. Is that not true?
Anybody from staff want to take that one?
Is the question of staff whether it is visible or whether it has to be visible from the bar or not? I think that's...
Well, my understanding was that the area needs to be visible from within the premises so that it can be supervised as the consumption and so on.
Stephanie Ian and/or Chief confirm or deny that?
Yes. People have to be seated at a table and alcohol has to be served to them. And also it should be supervised like any bartender within the establishment has to be visible from within. As for the construction or where the windows lie within the building, I am not sure. That would be a development question. Or engineering. They were permitted to build this deck through engineering and I'm not sure if development had any part with that.
We did just review the, or the building inspection did review it. They put the deck on top of an existing planter structure that's adjacent to the building. I do not believe there's any windows visible from the, inside the bar out to that deck. And it's around, basically around a corner from their front entrance. So I doubt that they have the visibility that you're talking about. But we were just asked to double check the deck structure first. So we relied on the other review for the, for the actual extension of premise.
Any help? Yes. And the second question that I had has been answered. We noticed this when we were doing the Bid Transportation Committee walk around through downtown. And it was remarked that it was, had not at that time been permitted. It was just being built and there were some structural deficiencies, but they've apparently addressed those. So my second question is addressed. But it seems like we do have an issue with visibility.
I just wanted to clarify that engineering has not issued the grant of privilege yet for, for this construction. There are some things I wanted to discuss to the property owner as far as the plan to redo the Main Street streetscape. Next year, I want to make sure that the property owner understands that that plan for the reconstruction of Main Street through downtown might come in conflict with this. I don't know. Maybe, maybe not. We don't have the design plans yet. And I want to make sure the property owners know that this improvement that they are putting in this year might be in conflict with that and may have to be removed. So I have yet to have that discussion with them and to sign off on the grant of privilege for that.
Looks like Ian has a comment quick.
So I did check our code. I think we previously had the visible language in the code. I think when we redid Chapter 12, we kind of streamlined that process. And so the criteria are the outdoor area must be adjacent to and accessible from the licensed premises. License holder is responsible to see alcohol beverages are served in compliance with state law. And no alcohol beverage may be served, sold, or consumed during the closed hours of licensed premises. So we don't have the visible. It just has to be adjacent and accessible. So the visible language is no longer in the code.
Okay. Should, should we basically wait for a grant of privilege? I mean, seems like we're putting the...
This, just so I could have a comment. The extension of premise is only to serve alcohol out there. It is not for the Sidewalk Cafe. Currently, they do have a Sidewalk Cafe for that area. It doesn't include the deck. Also, the grant, the extension of premise, they also have that out to their Sidewalk Cafe. It just doesn't include the deck. So if you want to wait on the deck for the extension of premise, you can. But the extension of premise is only to serve alcohol on that portion of your Sidewalk Cafe. Because what Ian was saying was we had changed the code to include. You cannot just have an extension of premise. You now have to have a Sidewalk Cafe in addition.
Who made the motion, Justice? I'd like to propose a friendly amendment to remove the deck from the extension of premise and revisit it later.
They currently have an extension of premise. So if you just would table this to the next meeting or until they have the grant of privilege, that would be fine. You don't have to remove it. They currently have it. We were just going to include the deck with the extension of premise that they already have to their Sidewalk Cafe that they currently have.
Motion to table.
Can I withdraw my motion? Do I need to do that or?
Do that, and then you can table. Okay. Is there a second?
Second on my motion to withdraw.
To withdrawing the motion? I'll second that.
Thank you.
No, that's not what I was asking. So it's gone. Now we need a table motion, correct you?
Correct.
Thank you. That's what I was asking.
Motion to table.
Okay. There we go. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all is favor, so don't be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Then we'll consent number three, which is approval of long-term storm water maintenance agreement, Legend Storage.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alan and Burke West. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all is favor, so don't be saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to agenda items for consideration. Number four, discussion and action on implementing a compensation plan. The way I'd like this to go, I'm gonna start with our city attorney Ian, just giving us a brief little legal warning. We'll go with a presentation by our city administrator Jay Shembo. And then I would like to wait on any sort of motion and allow time for all the council to be able to ask the questions and have the discussion that they need and before we're entertaining an official motion. So with that, let Ian kick it off.
So just wanted to make everybody aware, the, we should not be discussing specific positions as we go through this. The concern I have is that if you're parsing specific raises, why do we come to this one? You know, what are we using to do that? You're approaching open session discussion of things that pertain to like performance reviews and evaluations or could very well cross into that. So steer clear of specific positions, everything like that. If there's desire to discuss those things, that should be done in closed session, which we do not have on the agenda tonight. So if there's specifics, we can go into that at a later date in closed session, but just kind of, don't, don't cross that line. I don't want to have somebody run into problems and have a employee upset because we discussed performance review in open session.
Got it. Thanks, Ian. Take it away, Jeff.
Thanks. I'll just start out by talking through the, the process, if you will, of the compensation plan and how we've got to today's evening. Employees are our greatest asset. We talk about that often as a department head team. There's a bunch of our great team members in attendance today. They make this place and the services that we provide in the City of West Bend the best that they can be. So I start by stating the obvious. Our employees are the greatest asset of all organizations, any organizations. I'm proud of them, proud of the team that we have in place. And I'm hopeful the compensation plan that you have before you tonight is adopted and recommended to be included in the 2022 budget. The employees have been below market for some time. This isn't a surprise to anybody in this room. We've been talking about this as an organization the entire five years I've been here. Michelle is the HR Director that, that entire time as well, has placed in her budget a couple of times to have money available to complete a salary study. And I removed those funds before it got to you folks as an approving body or previous councils to you because we didn't have the funds to implement the results of any compensation plan that, that would have come up at that time. We do have those funds available and we've been targeting this date. The department heads might, if they're being honest, joke about the light at the end of the tunnel or rounding, turning the corner. We're finally doing that. We are. And it's something to be celebrated. Phil Kassen from Ellers shared that with you at the last meeting. The financial position that the City of West Bend is in is enviable. And it's, again, something that as a department head team, I know we're proud of. You should all be proud of as well. We do have the availability to implement this plan in 2022 and beyond. And we've known this date was coming for a long time. The talk about completing the in-house compensation plan is also something that should be eyes wide open for all of you. It's something that we've, I've chatted with you individually about over time. And one that I'll, I'll call out Owen. There aren't many public employees or public employee processes that receive kudos from Owen Robinson from Boots and Sabers. But in his comment, one of his blogs about maybe not so great things or about asking questions about the comp plan, he posted in a comment, well, at least they didn't spend money on a consultant. At least they did it in-house and they're spending money on the employees. And I'm, I'm proud of that. I'm proud of the work that we've done to get to this point. I can share with you that employee turnover is very, very costly. The amount of turnover that we've had in positions, the training of new employees, getting folks up to speed every time we lose a quality employee, the resetting of that job knowledge within the city organization, whether it be library or city clerk's office, DPW, PD. Chief just shared with me that our overtime budget this year is really taking a hit. And it's, it's not because we're putting a bunch of officers on overtime or that we've had crazy big incidents. It's because we're training a brand-new staff and the training officers are coming in on overtime to spend time with these new employees. And it's, it's just a fact that employee turnover is costly. So retaining employees, recruiting and retaining the best and brightest employees that we can is important. I believe this plan does that for us. The process that we went through was to gather information similar to the process that we took last year with police and fire, non-rep police and fire compared municipalities. And we reviewed that data, took that data through the budget, the 2021 budget process, and implemented a correction, a relatively significant correction within police and fire. So that model was replicated this time for all non-represented employees. Michelle gathered data from like-sized municipalities population-wise, and then Washington County data, a data set of southeastern Wisconsin municipalities, and then municipalities within the county. Because we lose, especially in the public works and parks area, we do lose employees to our, our neighbors, the Kiwaskam, Jackson, Hartford, and Germantowns of the world. We do lose our employees to them. As we train them up and are a lower-paying employer and they finally get their CDL through our Public Works Department, they can move on to these other municipalities for, for more cash in some instances, even the smaller municipalities. So the, the process from there after gathering the data was to review position by position comparable type of data sets. So for municipalities that were similar sized, we, when it made sense, we use those, those comparisons. When it made sense, like in the public works area that I mentioned, we would use some smaller municipalities as well. So the internal comparisons. We also reviewed structure within those municipalities that we had knowledge of and our own internal structure. And then internal review as well. We utilized internal comparisons of similar level of, of positions, both frontline staff within the office area, public works and parks, utilities, and then at the department head level as well. So we did do internal comparisons amongst those positions. And the recommendations that you have before you are the results of that. I can attempt to answer any questions that you might have, Mayor and Council. It's, it's with that level of data and process that we make the recommendation to make this compensation correction and move forward with employing our employees at the appropriate level of compensation that they deserve and have earned. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll open it up to the council. If anybody has questions, comments, concerns? Yes, sir.
All right, I'll start. I've got a few. I guess first question I've got is, obviously this is a big deal. And I'm not denying that any of our employees do or don't deserve a raise. I think quite a few of them do. But why was council not approached at some point and said, hey, this is a pretty big deal. What do you recommend? Why would we do a study like this in-house with that kind of impact with data that I can't make heads or tails of? Does it include their compensation package, their wages, their tenure, their experience, insurance costs, vacation? All those costs that go into a full comp study like we've seen in the past. All I've got here is strictly wages. I don't have, we've had turnover. Why have we had turnover? It's strictly wages? Is it management? Is it culture? Is it something else they don't like? Is it a decided transfer closer to home? We don't have any of that. We strictly have data based on a wage. And I, in good faith, without having a complete study, there, there's no way I can support this. And granted, 10% of the raises we're recommending, or 10 raises we're recommending are over $10,000. 25% of all the raise money is going to less than 10% of the employees. The 90% that really need it, we're not addressing. If public works, parks, and a couple areas are in need and we're having a lot of turnover, those are the areas we need to address. Some of these raises I look at are absolutely ridiculous. If we've gotten that far out of line in four or five years, then somebody wasn't doing their job previously and saying, hey, we're falling behind here. Why was this information not brought to council sooner to say, hey, we're slipping, guys, every year? We can't say, well, you didn't want a raise. We were never approached about it. So I, I've got a real, real difficult time with this. What are these new ranges based on? We just grab numbers out of the air? Where'd they come from? I have no data telling me what, where we got these new ranges from. It looks like we took their salary and said, okay, we're gonna give them this salary. We'll go this much less. There's our new range. What was it based on? What data? So if, if, in my opinion, I would recommend we go to a professional firm, get this thing done right, get the 80-page document we got last time, implement it, and then stick with it. We can't recommend a system and then nobody follows through on it. Then we failed ourselves. So that's where I stand.
Thank you. And, but yes?
All right. So I could kind of follow that with Randy. So I did, I reviewed a lot of this data. I tried to manipulate it. I do data analysis for a living. And I really do not have a good understanding of the numbers and the data behind this. I feel like I tried to ask a lot more questions and peel back a lot more layers and it was really difficult to comprehend. I, I really appreciate the effort, like, that we put this in-house and tried to do this. But I just don't know that I feel like what we got out of the data and the analysis and the understanding is as much as we could if we did do it with an outside company. These suggestions might be 100% right. I, I, I can't say. I'm not an HR professional. But I also know that nobody in this room is specifically a compensation expert like we could potentially get if we went to an RFP, if we added some council members to a committee like we've done for insurance, like we did for the fire study. I think that that would let a committee work on it. We could get more questions asked, get a little bit more reasoning behind this. You know, just looking at the numbers, if a study costs $30,000, I don't know, I'm just, maybe, I don't know what, 30, 50,000, that's only 6% of what the raises would be this one year. So I don't want to step over dollars to pick up pennies and not do the right thing for our citizens, for our employees by not getting professional advice. So I really would like to see what we had in the past, which was like the 140 pages with some options. There was like a big, you know, files. You know, I just, I don't feel confident in an Excel spreadsheet with some recommendations and, you know, 10 PDFs that were kind of thrown at us, like, look at this data and see what you guys think, because this is where we're at. I just, I don't feel good about it. So I don't think that I could back this without having a better understanding and a more in-depth look from, from a consulting firm that does this professionally, that can help guide us and give us some basis and guidelines. So that's where I'm at.
Thanks, Megan. Yep.
I have to, I have to disagree. We did have a compensation study done in 2013. And it does look to me like it's basically the same, the same reaction to that study is what we're trying to do now. And, but maybe they increased for inflation a little bit. But, but we did have professionals do it. And we do have a professional city administrator and a HR person that does understand these numbers a lot better than I do. And I, I do trust the numbers. In fact, I, if, if we go by the numbers that are being presented, this actually falls short $368,687.92. So for the last, I don't know how many years, the, the city employees have been carrying on their backs for the taxpayers of the city, $820,627.92. So you have it hard.
I just, I'm trying to follow your reasoning.
My logic? Well, if we, if we're supposed to be paying them a lot more than we are now, then by not paying them, that's money that the city is saving. So now we're, now we're able to do it without, without raising taxes. So it's really kind of a best-case scenario. But in the past, we haven't had the money to do it. So it would have cost taxpayer money to increase it to that point. Maybe it's a little bit convoluted logic. But in my mind, it makes sense. Anyways, we're way short, as far as I'm concerned. That doesn't mean I'm not gonna vote for what's presented. I think what's presented is a start. But I think we have a lot more work to do. And stop letting these folks carry, carry all the weight on their backs.
Thank you. Anybody else?
On the mound? Yeah, I, I heard several suggestions that we get an outside firm and then implement their plan. Are, would that be an acceptable alternative? Can we go spend $40,000 to $60,000, get our professional study and just agree to implement it?
I don't see the implementation part happening. Maybe they come in higher than this.
Well, they might, they might come a lot higher than this.
But I think we could be a part of the RFP, the Request for Proposal, and, you know, and ask some deeper questions, understand some things. I mean, you know, I have a hard time struggling. You know, 125 people left the city. I know that was a number Jay gave us in his presentation. But if you look, 95% of those people, so 76% have come from four departments. However, if you look at the dollar amounts of where the raises are going, 38% are going to those four departments. So we're losing more people but not paying enough to maybe retain them. So I guess some of my questions are about where we're over and under penetrating, if this is the proper amounts, if the departments are ranked properly. I would like to have a better understanding, like I said, from consulting firms that do this for a living. Maybe there are areas, certain departments, where it's a much more competitive job market. Maybe we do need to up it in a XYZ department. But maybe ABC department is less competitive right now. There's a lot more people looking for jobs. And with our benefit package, we're in a good place. I want to hear those things from experts, I guess. And, and I'm not hurting Jay or anyone else that worked on this plan. But they don't have a quote-unquote "dog in the fight" in, in getting a raise or, you know, their employees being happy. And that also, I think, could make a lot of people in the city and the community, the taxpayers, feel good. And I hope our, our, our employees feel good too. Because like I said, I'm not saying this plan is not correct or that nobody's underpaid. But I just want to have a much better understanding.
Yes, sir. Yep, go on.
I'm pessimistic when I hear that we should have a compensation study, spend 50 to 60,000. I'm pessimistic that if that is done, it'll even be followed. Because I remember planning this year's budget, Jay, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the total cost to provide the pay increase for the nonrepresented employees in this year's budget was $45,000.
And there were one or two members of this council who protested over that amount of money. Because such and such a business has done layoffs, and the county has done furloughs, which was old news. And we have a pandemic, and so on and so forth. I can't believe that if there was a compensation study that came back, that it would be welcomed with opened arms, any more than a $45,000 across-the-board increase for all the angst that we had in that budget that we're in right now. And speaking of the county, and this is in praise of the county, not in criticism, you know, nobody wrote, we were accused of being either liberals or in the pockets of the public employees because of a 2% increase in this year's budget for the nonrepresented. And nobody said anything that the county did a 3%, which was a combination of their cost of living and their pay plan. Oh, yes, the county did a pay plan two years ago, because they had the very same problem we had. Nobody talks about that. Nobody writes columns in the newspaper saying anything about the county. We're all awful people. Their pay plan said 92% of their ranges had to be adjusted. They ended up finding that 62% of their people had to get an increase in their wages. They found the same stuff. And they paid for it, incidentally, out of the sales tax. Nobody said anything about that. But again, this isn't, not in criticism of the county, it's just kind of an observation about the points of view that some people have. The county did the right thing. They could not retain and attract new employees. And they discovered they were really behind the eight ball. We're in the very same situation. I understand wanting an outside firm. But again, I'm pessimistic that it would make any difference to some of you. It was asked, we were never approached by Jay Chambeau about doing this. Heck, we were arguing about that 2% increase. Nobody here, most, some of you wouldn't have approved it anyway, if you, to spend 50 or 60,000. That you would have approved big pay raises just because you were approached. Finally, if, I don't know how we would get this done in time for next year. I don't know how we would get an RFP out and back and, and finished, get somebody hired, and have them do the study in time for the 2022 budget. Jay, is that even possible?
No.
Kind of a rhetorical question. So our, so we tell our employees, well, you're going to have to wait another year. And I don't know that that's the solution.
Just to clarify, because I was on the county board, didn't the county board use a third-party contractor for that?
My understanding is that they used a third-party contractor to collect the data, not to do the whole study. Do you know?
That I wasn't sure. That's why I was asking you. I'm trying to remember, recall.
They bought data with it. The cost to implement their plan was 1.8 million. To implement the plan, like ours is 450,000. The cost to implement their plan is 1.8.
It wasn't the cost of the study.
No, no, they did, they bought data, but they did the study.
This is a serious study.
You said the county found 92% of people needed raises, but they went with 61%?
No, they, they, it was their ranges were screwed up.
Okay.
But ultimately, 62% of their people had to get raises in order to start the adjustment process going. The average annual pay increase was 5.8%. When it says annual, it may have been just the first year to get it corrected. I don't know. But it's, I'm just quoting from their own, their own program. So.
The average was 5.8?
All right. Thank you. Anybody else?
Question for either Michelle or Administrator Chambeau. Was, were there any positions where we were above the range? Were, were there any? And then the second, oh, actually, there's two questions. Were there any positions that we were above the range? And were there, what will be the impact of having previously trued up the nonrepresented fire and police? Does that have any impact? Was that considered?
Yeah, I'll take it. So when you say above the range, Alderman Allen, do you mean above the, lots of positions came in that are old existing ranges, which weren't updated since 2013, were low. So positions were above those ranges. But we created new ranges based off of the work that Borhees did in 2013.
Right.
As far as the police and fire, the answer is yes. Those were absolutely taken into consideration. Because of the adjustments that were made in 2020 for 2021, the adjustment needed for police and fire was relatively small compared to, if they weren't done in 2020, it would have been a significant increase for those positions.
So there was no plan to do an across-the-board raise of X dollars per employee type adjustment?
For non-union? Are you asking?
For the people that are covered by the nonrepresented salary grades.
So, well, the nonrepresented salary individuals receive the same, and I think that was discussed at the council level for 2021's budget as well. But they see, they receive the same percent increase that everybody else did, assuming that they were meeting their expectations.
And then there's mention in the infographic that you circulated about, these are merit-based. In reality, aren't, aren't these based on cost of living adjustments and bringing the salary into range? And they apply only to employees that are meeting, meeting the objectives of their position?
So the, the compensation plan corrections are not meant to be merit-based. They're meant to be employees in good standing correcting for the wages that they should be receiving. The 2% that we discussed the last time we had this topic before you, if we're have, if we're able to have a 2% cost of living for 2022, that would be merit-based, as it has been in the past. So the cost of living, but again, anything above the compensation plan would be merit-based. And we're in a fortunate position where most of our employees, I think that was asked or mentioned last, last time we, we met, that most of our employees do receive that if it's a percent and a half, 2%, they're, they're in good standing and have earned the, the percent cost of living for the following year. There are a few cases where we withhold a portion thereof.
Okay. And then typically, I see merit referring to exceptional job performance. In other words, singling somebody out. They're, they're not getting a promotion, but you're recognizing their value through, through a spot bonus or a raise of some type. And that, to my mind, is merit, not being in good standing.
Yeah. So I would say if, if we were talking about, and some municipalities have a 0% to 4% cost of living increase truly based on merit. So if, if you're a high performer, you might be able to score that 3% or 4%. And a lower performer or meeting expectations would come in at 1% or 2%, or 2% or 3%. With having such a modest cost of living increase that we've had over time, merit is based on the, on the cola that's offered. So it's, it's a merit-based program, but it's at 2%-ish, depending on the, on the year. We've had years where we've granted less than that. And we did have a year where we were granted 2.5%. We did have a year, a few years ago, it was 2018, where we had an additional merit program with an additional half percent that was granted to a few employees that were the high performers, if you will. And department heads took that very seriously and worked through that process with their team. But we've only, in my tenure with West Bend, we've only been able to do that one time.
Could that be something in like an RFP that they could potentially help us, guide us on, on that? Something like this amount of raises, here's how much could go to merit? Here's, could we ask those type of questions?
Asking?
I guess. I mean, you would know the RFP, I guess, if we could.
I mean, I think you can ask anything in an RFP. Again, I don't recommend putting this off another fiscal year. The employees are behind market. They're only going to be further behind market if this isn't implemented in 2022.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a business owner. And I've also worked outside of our business in the management level for over a decade. I'm fully aware of the cost to recruit, hire, and train new employees. It is very costly. And I truly want West Bend to have the happiest staff in the state. That being said, I'm not prepared today to vote in favor of the proposed compensation plan for several reasons. Even before I look at the numbers, I was concerned about the municipalities that we were compared to. Brookfield was one. You know, you drive through Brookfield, and it's a completely different world than driving through West Bend. Cost of living is, is much higher there. There also seems to be a problem with the turnover in just a couple of departments. And, you know, people take or stay or leave jobs for factors beyond pay all the time. I'm one of them. You know, your, your benefit package is huge. Dental, health, vision, life, disability insurance, PTO, vacation, retirement plans, 401Ks versus pensions, amount of holidays you get, and the miscellaneous fringe benefits that are offered. Managers are a huge role. If you have a great manager, sometimes you're willing to stay in, for less money. I've done it probably too many times. I've also left really bad managers very quickly and left good jobs. You're, the people you work with make or break your day. You're with them for eight hours a day. If you've got a chromium, you know, person sitting next to you, maybe not pulling their fair share, that may want you to, to leave your position as well. What are the hours like? The flexibility, the location? Do you prefer to work in it, in, you know, the town or the city you live in? Will you give up a buck an hour, or make a dollar an hour to go, you know, and drive a half an hour away? I mean, that, that's money. Whether it's coming on your paycheck or whether you're giving it to QuickTrip in your gas tank, that's, you need to be smart about things like that. Your responsibility. You may leave a position for more or less responsibility. On-call responsibilities when it comes to some of the blue-collar-type jobs. And how many weeks or weekends are you required to work? Some jobs just have higher turnover across the board, all over the place. Right now, we're seeing police all over the country. They, they can't keep good policemen because they're quitting because of all this craziness going on in the world. A couple more things that give me pause is, we're asked to give raises to employees that were just given raises about a year ago, from what I understand. And someone who was hired less than a year ago. That doesn't seem right to me. Can we find ways to streamline some things, like teaming up with the county? There's, since 2016, there were 29 employees that left Public Works. Of them, 16 went to another municipality. Does that mean that those other municipalities are having the same issues we are? Are we just trading, trading employees? I don't know. And I made a campaign promise to my constituents, and West Bend as a whole, that I will hold the line on spending. That promise wasn't empty words. And I wasn't looking for votes. I truly am committed to keeping spending to necessities. Perhaps we do need to look at this compensation plan and, and pay our employees more. But I am looking for an independent study to show us that. Though I trust that the, the people who did put these numbers together, they're going to directly benefit from, from this. So I think we need somebody who is a third party to provide us the numbers. I don't think it would be responsible for me as a representative of the taxpayers of West Bend to approve that today.
Thank you. Alderman Dolik?
Tracy, you just spoke for five or six minutes about all the reasons why you wouldn't support a pay raise, including your campaign promise. So why, as I said before, I was pessimistic about investing money on a study. Why should I believe that you would vote for a pay raise, even if the study says so?
I don't think, I think you should stick to some "I" statements on what you believe. I don't know why you have to come after her, what she believes. I mean, that's kind of rude.
And I thought I was being polite.
I'm just saying.
Totally valid point that he's making, though.
Because if I'm going to vote to delay this for a compensation study, I need to know ahead of time that the council is going to follow what the compensation study says. And if, if aldermen are saying now, these are all the reasons that I don't believe in this, then I'm, why should I vote 50, 60,000 for a compensation study? That's, that's all.
So I'll just jump in. If we go that direction, I just want to jump in on my, my confidence, I guess, in that. And I'll take it from the, the fire study. We just met to review the fire study. And that's a group of varying opinion, opinionated individuals. And we all got to watch that, watch that overview of that study, which will be coming to us in a couple of weeks. And the ability and the camaraderie that we're able to have to all coalesce around that issue, I think everybody there, maybe going into it, we weren't excited about what the recommendations would be. But at the end, hearing some of the things that we did enjoy hearing, maybe some things that we didn't, I feel so much more confident that our city can move forward with the changes that this third-party contractor is recommending. And again, I don't know what the specifics of that is. But I can tell you, sitting in that room with the varying opinions that, at least we're in that committee, that that report, we're able, was able to put some minds at ease. And I'm excited. I'm excited to bring that recommendation to you guys when we get to that point. So I don't know about the rest of the council, but I would, I would be excited to hear and see what a third-party payroll study would be, if that's the council's wishes. That's just my two cents.
I appreciate your optimism on the fire study.
Yeah, no problem.
We haven't, we haven't gotten it here, heard about it, and voted on it yet. And that's the part Jed's talking about. And that's the part I'm concerned about, too, was the fire study included. If they say we need 12 more firefighters, are we, are you really going to do that? No, it's just not going to happen. So I have, I have trouble, I have trouble with some of the attitudes.
Alderman Kennedy had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've, I don't remember. I'm sorry. Let me think.
Kayla, and then Butch.
All right. So as everybody else has said up here, I truly think many of our employees deserve a raise. Based upon what I have, I'm not sure which ones truly deserve a raise and which ones don't. There are several, in my opinion, that are not warranted. But to come here before council and say, well, you got to hurry up, ram this thing through, because we got a budget coming, then I'm going to place a blame on you for not bringing this to us sooner, giving us time to analyze it and make it work. To come now and hold it over our heads and have these employees look at us like the bad guys because we can't implement this fast enough is wrong. What I would propose is, take that money that you've got budgeted for the raises, put it in the budget, earmark it, but sit on it unless the proposal comes back that that's what we need. Then it's in the budget. You don't have to worry about, oh, now we don't have the money. Put it in there and earmark it. Get the study done by the end of the year. We'll know what we've got. Then you can implement your study.
I remember. Sorry.
John?
That's just what I was going to say. Randy just mentioned exactly what my question was going to be. It sounds like most of the council is in favor of, of a study. And if we got that money available, we can use, as you said, save that money. And if that study comes... And if that study comes back, I am sure we all are going to be agreed that Jay, Michelle, you did a great job on what you've done, but we have about five or six employees that deserve a little more of a raise than what you have decided deserves. Now, it's going to put us in a situation where the comp, the benefit comes through and says, now you got to make a decision, are you going to allow these four or five extra people get that extra increase? No matter what we're going to decide, it's going to be a tough decision to make. I, I compliment both you and Michelle, Jay, you and Michelle, you did a great job on it. I know there's questions out there. In order to, to make my peace of mind, I think I would feel more confident with the, with the plan by someone coming in and reviewing it and saying, yes, this is it. But I do not want that money to go anywhere except for the employees. I want to make sure that that money is there because you all deserve an increase. I used to be a city employee, I know what it's like waiting for that pay, pay increase to come through and, well, we always got the word, the, the city's in a tough situation. We're in deep debt and you're just going to have to bite the bullet. And every one of you have been doing that for quite a few years. And I don't want to see that, that you guys have to bite the bullet another year. So I, I am in favor of having a consultant come in and look over this plan and come back and give us exactly what we are looking for up here.
Brett.
As most of you know, I came from the same background. You know, I spent 20 years working here as a city employee, waiting for those pay raises the same way. And year after year after year, we were given 1%, 2% because again, the city was in dire straits. Okay? Now, we've come on a, lack of a better term, windfall that we can afford to compensate the employees, get them back to where, you know, a, a living wage. We've heard that term a long time, okay? Living work, living wage, making us equal with comparables. One, one of the things that I ran into while I was preparing for this is that I'm no longer that employee. All right? I represent 3,000, 4,000 people in a district that, that pay the bills. And I'm no longer voicing Brett's opinion. I'm now, I'm now talking for those people. And I'm not a CPA, I, I don't have, you know, the, the knowledge, the work knowledge that some of the people that are sitting on this, this panel have. Okay? But, and, and I also made a promise to my constituents that, and it wasn't as sharp as no taxes or no spending. Okay? It was that I would be responsible with their money, that I would give them the benefit of doubt and that I would keep them informed of what we, what we do. So yes, I, I have some questions, you know? I have some questions about, again, why, why wasn't a consultant firm used? Why do we do this in-house? I, I get that fact, okay? Human resources, the city administrator, that's their job to do things like that, I get that. Okay? But when someone comes to me and asks me that, don't you think there's a problem with that? And wouldn't it be good to have an outside source look at it? We can say yes to that answer, too. Okay? But then, again, then the part of me that says, I worked in these guys' shoes and they deserve every penny that they earn. We've, we've shown that. We got to keep that into, into account. And that's one of the things that I reached out to my constituents. And majority of those constituents said they had no problem doing the same. That, you know what, you pay for good things. If we want good things in this city, we're going to have to pay for them. Okay? And this is just part of that, you know? We, we honor our employees, we honor the people that you work, work with, they, they deserve that, that wage. We just have to be smart in how we do it. Okay? So the fact, you know, I, I say, hey, I'm, I'm not going to make a decision until I hear all the facts. That's what we saw tonight. We, we had different opinions from everybody up here, you know? To, to say that, well, why haven't you come out on a stand or taken a stand on the issue? It's like, well, because there's more information out there and we've seen that tonight. Okay? So our, our job now is to determine whether we can go forward with this and, and satisfy our constituents that we've done that responsible spending of their tax dollars, which again, I promised I would to, you know, making sure that our employees are again, the, taken care of, being treated the best way that we can. And I think that's the best way. I think now looking at the compensation plan, it's appropriate, it's done by professionals that we have on staff. Why would we look to spend money elsewhere? But then also, you know, I can see where the people are concerned with some of those standpoints. You know, some of the numbers, we, you've heard them up here, you know, 10%. Or a majority of the money is spent on a small number of people. Okay, I get that, but they're in those positions. So we got to, we got to look at it a little different. Okay? I think, I think we need to spend some time, maybe another meeting, maybe getting together. I know we've got some constraints as far as communication goes, as far as the, the council goes. But you know what, I think we can make that work and, and get around that. So as far as I'm concerned, I, I'm for the study, or I'm, I'm for the study and I'm also for the compensation plan. Again, I think there are some issues both ways that we can address that could make me decide one way or the other. Right now, I don't feel comfortable in making the decision yes or no. So that's where I stand tonight. I would ask that if it be postponed for another time or vote no.
Alderman Dolik and then Alan. Was he first?
Well, I just had two things. Number one, if we're going to say there needs to be an outside compensation study, there needs to be a finance mechanism for it. Okay? We just don't, we're going to do it, we got to pay for it and where's it going to come from? The other thing is that if we're going to, and I, I think that's a good idea, I've lost track, was that John's idea? To put the money away for next year, that's, that's a good idea. However, it doesn't preclude pay raises for next year. I think we have to give the city employees some kind of hope for next year, aside from the compensation study, that they're at least going to get something here because they are behind. I don't know if that will be at budget time or what. As far as waiting, we can't wait, Brett. I mean, in my personal opinion, I think we have to, you know, make a decision one way or the other tonight. So, thank you.
Yep. Jay, is there a mechanism for us to put aside the cost of this study? In other words, if we were to implement the, can we pre-allocate that into the budget? And then perform realignments based on, um, you know, a study that would be performed as soon as we can get it done? And then, secondly, do we have money available to do the study? If not, that puts it out at least into next fiscal year.
So yes, we can budget for the increase, the 280 and the 450 that was recommended in a lump sum account that can be earmarked for employees once the comp plan is completed or whatever. That, I mean, that, that's the number that I guess I would, I would recommend. That's the num, the number that is in this comp plan. Regarding the money for the study, we went into the FIRE study without designated cash as well. We were hopeful that Chief had money available. And I mean, I, Carrie and I would talk, but I assume we would just utilize the fund balance to complete the compensation plan.
And when we talked about the TIP dollars, that's where those dollars were going to replenish anyway, right? Was the fund balance? That from the last meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Alderman?
So if we can do both, is basically what I hear you guys talking about, right? Is apply, apply this compensation plan as it is in theory and put it in a, put it in an account. And when the, when the, when the new revised study comes out and probably tells us that we're going to have to spend more, then we can add to that. But either way, these folks are getting raises next year in this, in this scenario that we're talking about.
Assuming we get the comp plan, the, the study back in time, right? And it gets brought before us and all that, then yes. Yep. Because it wouldn't be finished by the end of the year. So it was not like effective 1-1 of 2022, they wouldn't start.
No, then I disagree. I, I am, I have real concerns, we're going to lose a bunch of people. Now that, now that this plan has been presented, as it's been promised year after year after year, we're going to give you more money eventually, we're going to give you more money eventually. And now we're saying, we're going to give you more money, you know what I mean? And, but no, actually, we're not, we're going to put it in the account and freeze it until, who, who knows when? I have real concerns about that.
Randy or John?
I don't ever remember council ever saying, we're not giving anybody. Have we ever had a year where nobody got any raises?
Yeah.
Entire, we voted where all some staff got zero.
I'm pretty sure you know that's not what I'm talking about.
I don't remember when that was, but.
Well, then that's not what I'm talking about anyways.
I, I'm not saying these guys don't deserve raises, but some of these raises, I absolutely, there's one position that in four years has gone up $21,000. I find it hard to believe we're that far behind. On the data that we were given.
I don't.
If you can vote confidently that given strictly dollar amounts or enough data for you to make a 500 and some thousand dollar decision, have at it, but I'm not. It may very well be warranted, but then give me the data that supports it other than just wages. You're not looking at the entire picture here. Do you base your whole hair cutting business strictly on your wages? Or do you have other things that go into your plan that if you were to hire an employer, you're just going to base wages? No insurance, none of that. For all we know, these people that are $10,000 more may pay $8,000 a year less than insurance. You're looking at apples and bananas. I need all of the data. I can't just look at a dollar amount and go, yep, they're $20,000 short, even though they pay $10,000 a year less insurance. I don't know if that's a fact, I don't know. So I cannot make an informed decision.
Dolik?
Okay. I disagree with Randy's analysis. We, we generally don't do total compensation. County didn't do total compensation, that was purely wage. But be that as it may, I'm thoroughly confused. I thought, based on what John's proposal was, was that that money was going to be. Oh, I'm sorry, Randy. Okay, sorry. Randy's idea. I thought Randy's idea was that the money was going to be available next year. But now, Mayor, you're saying that it would have to wait for 2023?
No, 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 that's not what I was saying. I'm just saying after, after the study's completed and it comes back to us, which would be within the year.
Next year, but we, but we could still, we could still take action on it next year.
Yep, because those monies would have been set aside, that's.
Thank you, thank you.
Randy and John's suggestion.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. Yes, sir.
Administrator Shambo, if, if this is, if we go out to get a study, get an RFP done or, or single source to somebody that does this, can we realistically get that done relatively quickly? I mean, or, you know, what's, what's the timeframe if we go out tomorrow for a study?
That would take some time to give you a timeframe. Before, when you asked, somebody asked me the question, I thought you were asking the question, could a study be done in time to budget for? And that's why I gave you a quick no. So Alderman, Kayler, if, if that's the, um, the reaction that you had to that response, my apologies for that. Of course, we could go out to RFP tomorrow for a salary study and have a consultant selected within a few weeks to a month and have the consultant work on the plan over the next X amount of weeks and then have a response back. Could that be completed by the end of the year? Sure, I think it could be. We could still implement 1-1 of, of 2022. And that certainly would be my hope. If we're budgeting the money to pay the employees, I would much rather they have the money as soon as in the new year as possible.
Jay, the TID reimbursement monies that we talked about the previous meeting, we know that some of those were proposed to be allocated for this purpose. Are there additional funds that are coming from that that are not yet allocated? Just so if the study comes back and to Alderman Model's point, they say we need to pay more, we have funds available to that extent?
Well, we would have to budget for those funds for that purpose. Or we'd have to amend the budget to include.
So that's what I'm saying, so that was extra revenues that we're reimbursing to ourselves. Right now, it's just getting reimbursed to the reserves, right? The general fund?
No, no, it's coming back to pay back the, the general fund.
Yep.
Yep. And we would budget for those revenues to come into 2021. We would also budget an expenditure to offset those revenues. So if it's not the comp plan, we could put it in a, or we could budget more than the 450 if that's what the direction is, but I'm not sure.
We could apply the additional the following year or something like that. And just start with this, at least we have that, you know? And if, if it comes back for more, we can add that.
What was your total, Jay?
281 for general fund and then 450 total, 283 for general fund.
So 450 was the correct total.
Correct.
And I, and I have no problem with that if we get to a motion and say, okay, we're going to budget this money. It's there. We do the study and we've got that much money to implement whatever they recommend. And if we need more at that time, then we decide whether we're going to go more or less. But I don't have a problem budgeting that amount and let's see what we come up with. I just need, for me to make an informed decision, I do not have enough data at this time. And if it's going to go as it's proposed, I'm, I'm a definite no.
Perquist?
Jay, is there a possibility of having like a second opinion, someone, rather than a full-blown study? Because I was part of the FIRE study, okay? And we saw the timeframes that that took and that, you know, we're kind of under the gun here as far as all that we're talking about. Is there an avenue out there that we can have someone just review the numbers? Take out any kind of, and I hate to use the term impropriety, but an outside source that won't do the whole entire study like we just went through for half the money?
That would have to satisfy everybody, I don't think it's going to.
I mean, if you're asking me the question, consultants will do whatever we ask and pay for them to do. So yes, I do think there's an avenue for that. The mayor and I had a conversation today and I talked with Michelle in advance of tonight's meeting, so I'm not speaking out of school by saying this. I offered to the mayor that if, because Michelle was involved and she's scheduled for an increase, I talked to a consultant who would do a one-off on her salary and we would, could withhold it from tonight's action and have that consultant perform the one-off, if you will, on Michelle's salary not to exceed the amount that we're recommending. I, that's not the path you're clearly talking now. I, I would still rather see that. But if you're talking about a consultant that would review our, do a cursory review of our, our numbers, I, of course, they could do that and I'm confident in the results of them. But I'm not sure that, I, I think I agree with Alderman Model. I'm not sure that it satisfies the desires of some of the comments that I heard tonight regarding more information, if you will.
And any other comments?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
I, I guess the concern I would have to taking that approach is we've got at least one councilman who's already stated that they won't spend money. They're going to, you know, and, and we're asking to spend money for a study and increase salaries based on the result of that. How does, how does that happen if you're not willing to expend funds?
Who said they weren't going to spend money?
Tracy.
She didn't say she wasn't going to spend any money.
All right, all right. Let's settle now. Well, I think that we're somehow coming up with a motion here regards to, what I'm hearing is 450, separate account, outside contractor study. And I don't think I'm missing anything else, but if somebody would like to make that motion, they can.
I will make a motion.
Attorney Proust, is that on the agenda? The agenda item is.
So it would be motion to deny and then add that stuff?
Well, it would, yeah, we'd have to agenda, we'd have to put the agenda on separately. I mean, we would, you would basically be giving direction to a staff to go out for RFP for that. You don't need council permission to do that, so they, you would be doing that. But you can't make the motion to allocate the budgeted funds today and withhold those. That's not on the agenda.
But on this specific item then, what, do you need a table? Do you need just flat out no or just no action?
I mean, yeah, no action is fine too. I mean, no action or, I mean, a motion to approve would be either, or would, you know, a motion to deny would take this out completely. No action would allow for the agenda to be modified accordingly for the next meeting.
Okay, so if we take no action then, can we make sure that the minutes state at least what the consensus is and it sounds like?
Well, I think you have to ask for if there's any other motions too. I mean, you can't direct the motion as the chair, the governing body gets to make the motion. So I think there needs to be a call for motions to see what motions are made.
Okay. Are there any motions at all?
Do you need a motion to not take action?
No.
Oh, okay.
Question. If we, we're not, we don't have a motion on the floor, we have, we're having a discussion, correct?
Right.
We don't have a motion on the floor. The question I have is can we put a motion on the floor to direct how the budget gets prepared if it hasn't been, I mean, we haven't been presented with the budget yet.
Yeah, that's what he was saying. We'd have to wait.
This is the approval of the compensation plan. Certainly, the city administrator and finance director can take into account what you guys have said and take this into consideration when preparing the budget, which is coming, what, two meetings, next meeting? I don't know. Next, two or three meetings, whatever, and presenting it to the council. But that's not a motion to direct that. That's just them taking into consideration what was discussed here tonight. The same with going out to RFP and bringing the contract for approval at a future meeting. Does that make sense?
How can we, I don't want to use the word guarantee, but how can we put the cities, city employees at ease that this compensation study is being taken seriously and likely to be implemented? How, what has to happen?
So it sounds like other motions would get, I'm sorry, other agenda items would get brought back at a future meeting that would guarantee that, right? Right? The motion to go out for RFP, the, a future budget discussion and...
Well, if you, if you wait for September 13th to do a motion to, for an RFP, that's not going to help get it.
We said we can't do it.
Right. I know you can't do it tonight, but you can by consensus direct staff to move forward with an RFP.
Can we take a motion to express our consensus or do you want us to each?
You can do that?
Sure, just by consensus, by head nodding, body language, comments that you've made, if that's...
All right.
Everybody's cool with RFP and putting the money in the bank.
Putting the money in the bank, but for the budget.
You'll have time to make a motion to put the money in the bank, so to speak, in a future meeting.
And proceed with an RFP.
Okay, I think we're all head nodding.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you to Administrator Shambo. We had a lot of fun conversations over the past couple of weeks. We know that. Everybody's passionate about this issue. Clearly, our staff are super passionate, just as we are. So I just want to thank everybody for coming out, staying throughout this long meeting, hearing our discussion, and we look forward to the results and the fruits of that labor that's coming. So thanks so much. And with that, we are on number five, repeal and recreate section 7.0752A of the municipal code regarding parking lots. Who do we have speak on this? Anybody? Jay?
This is just a cleanup of some language. With the development downtown, the one parking lot, which was, which is now going to be part of the development of the new apartment there, the old brewery site is no longer a parking lot and the West Bend Fire Department upper lot has been sold some permits. That was not in the ordinance, so just cleaning up that language.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Allen and Muddell, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Will there be a certain number of spaces that are not subject to permitting, to permit people to do business at the fire station?
Yes. And we consulted with the fire department before that language was put in here. So yes, it'll be similar to, if you will, like the Walnut Street lot where some are permitted and some are for people to go in and want to shop and use downtown.
Currently, they're, they allowed for 10 permitted lots, parking stalls.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, all's a favor, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number six, mayoral appointment of William Green to the Ethics Committee. Just looking for a motion.
Do approve.
Thank you, Donak and Kayler. Any questions on that? Seeing none, all's a favor, so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Green, for stepping up to serve our community. Number seven, discussion on vacant house located at 812 Fairview Drive. Ian, are we starting with that?
So Justice asked me to put this on the agenda to discuss procedure for this. This is a, and some of this is kind of a universal discussion regarding, you know, vacant properties, dilapidated properties, but there's a lot of kind of interesting issues with this specific house. So 812 Fairview has been an issue for several years. The first issue that has come up and has been an issue for the entire time that it was kind of deteriorating is the original owner of this house was the mother of the person who is currently, it's currently titled to. That person left it directly to her son, or the mother left it directly to her son. It transferred non-probate, went straight to the son. Mom was on Medicaid for a substantial period of time. There is a Medicaid lien against the house. So there is a significant Medicaid lien against the house that took precedent over any other sale proceeds that would have wiped out all her, you know, a substantial portion of any sale proceeds. The son lived in the house for several years. It was deteriorating. Son then passed away. His family basically, he didn't have any other probate assets. So the family looked at it and said, "Well, this is the only thing. We're not going to get any money out of here." They basically just walked away from the house. During this time, the taxes have not been paid. So as we were getting ready to address this house moving forward, I noted, I just happened to see in the newspaper, the listing of tax deed properties that the county is working on, and this is one of the tax deed properties. So in addition to the Medicaid lien, which we had figured out how to address, the, this property is currently slated to be taken by tax deed by the county as of the end of the year, and then they will then sell the property. So in discussions with staff, it, we basically came to the conclusion that if we spend the money now, we don't have a good way to assess it against the property. That's going to be wiped out by the tax deed process. This is similar, if anybody recalls, the special assessment for that property that sold by tax deed on Sand Drive, where there was special assessment money out there for road improvements, and it got sold a tax deed and we basically had to write off, was it like $100,000 of, or more of special assessment? So if we spend the money today, we don't have a good way to recoup those funds. If we wait until the county takes it by tax deed, we have a variety of options. We have some existing small special assessments for sewer, some cleanup costs. We could potentially take over the property ourselves by paying some of the back taxes, paying the other taxing entities and such. That could be an option. Otherwise, once the county owns it by tax deed, we have the opportunity to then raise it and assess the cost or have somebody who buys it either fix it up or take care of raising it themselves and build something new on the property. The biggest concern that we've expressed, you know, Alderman Model, is that there's no way to recoup the funds. This would basically be money spent with no opportunity to recoup it. In a normal raise order, we assess the property and then when the property is sold, we get those funds back. In this case, we would not because by the tax deed process, we're wiped out, as is the Medicaid lien notably. So Justice wanted this placed on, for discussion because, you know, it's his desire to take care of the dilapidated house immediately.
It was my desire when we started this conversation a few months ago, and then it, the county taking that over and it kind of negating our funds or any potential to get those back has changed my mind, of course, but it still speaks to a larger issue that this house has been falling apart. I mean, I sent some pictures to Jay. It's probably not necessary to put them up, I guess, but I got an email, I think kind of describes the problem from the neighbor to 812 Fairview. I do understand, Justice, hi, Justice, I do understand how it may not be a city issue, but then who is responsible for the property right now? I don't see any information on Medicare or Medicaid aspect. How can I take up the matter with an owner who has passed away? As the house rots and decays and more decrepit trees fall, I am to take responsibility? I fix this, my fence and shed right now and another tree from the property falls and it does it all over again. I need some direction because the house and property need to be leveled before it wreaks more havoc. I'd like to know that before I put my money, put out my own money to fix the problem, that shouldn't be mine in the first place, that it will be taken care of and not happen again. I'm really frustrated. And this has been over and over and over for the last couple of years this woman's been dealing with this property. I would just like there to be maybe, and it's, and I understand that this doesn't happen a lot, but it does happen. Chief, can you talk for, talk for just a second about this? Because he's, he's expressed the frustrations of this woman and myself a little better than I have, so.
I'd be happy to recognize the chief. Aye.
Good evening. Well, I, yes, I'm very frustrated by it. I have, I don't want to be the, act like I'm the expert on this at all because I think Mark and Jim are far more expert in dealing with some of these nuisance properties and building codes than I am, but I will. We have tried on the police department for several years to try to stay on top of these and at least work with other city departments. Most of these are not police issues per se, but they certainly affect police issues and we have properties like this. And I do, for the other aldermen, I did print up some of these photos and if you don't mind, I will pass them around.
Yeah.
Justice, I drove by that place. I saw what you're talking about.
Yeah.
The eaves are dropping, the roof has got holes in it, the roof is actually caving in.
And I don't want to, yeah.
That doesn't even, I just want to tell you, I'm sorry to interrupt. Seeing those pictures, and I was going to say that as you were, doesn't appreciate how bad it is because you get out of your car and the smell and the stench in that neighborhood and around that house is horrible. And the city has done some stuff in response, Justice, too. DPW has been there. They've been cleaning up as best they can, cutting the grass, removing stuff. I mean, we've had people use it as a dump site, so the city has tried. I will tell you that, I mean, it does create a number of problems for the police. We have a couple of other properties like that in the city where kids are hanging out and there's, we went through this with 2100 Northwestern, took several years. I am not the legal expert here. I've talked to Ian on this property. I have an understanding of some of the legal issues. I'm frustrated at the time it takes and I wish we would speed it up. I've, again, I've talked to building inspection and I would like that we would be a little more aggressive with our building inspection, to be honest with you, and I think that's partly a lack of staff. I shouldn't say partly, that's just a lack of staff that they have. From a police standpoint, I can see a problem, but we're not the experts in some of the building code violations and some of the things. So this has been a problem for years. It was a problem when the man was alive yet because he did not take care of the property. He had some, I'll just say some disabilities that made it very, very difficult to work with and the building and the whole, he just lived in some pretty bad conditions and was willing to live in that. So we've been after this property for at least five years, if not more. I got stuff going back to 2009, actually, when we first started having problems. That's when the mother was still alive.
And to Chief's other point, I do get, I'm sure other aldermen too as well, get a lot of messy neighbor complaints, you know, and I, and in a lot of cases, I'll go take pictures and pass them along and I, and I know it's, it's got to be a staffing issue because they just don't seem to get followed up on. And if they were followed up on a while, a while ago on this house, either we could have done something about it a year ago or maybe we wouldn't be in this position. So I don't, I don't know if it's a matter of earmarking the money for raising or, I'm not going to try to say hire more staff because that's not going to happen, but.
So the process for a raise order is essentially we go out with the building inspector. Building inspector evaluates the property. We can either issue a raise order and say that it is repairable or it is not repairable. There's a financial threshold, I believe it's, if it's 50% of the value, I'd have to double check, but I believe it's a 50%, 50% threshold. So is it repairable or is it not? If it's not and it's below, you know, the, the cost to repair it is more than 50% of the value, we issue a raise order which says you have to take it down within 30 days. If that does not happen, then the city can step in. We can raise the property. This is, for example, the property on River Road next to Mauricio's that we raised. We issued the raise order. It didn't, nobody raised it. We hired a contractor to do that. We raised the prop, raised the, you know, raised the property. Then we can assess that prop, that charge back to the property owner via the tax bill. And then at that point, the biggest issue with that at that point is we lose control of that amount of money then because we don't have the ability to enforce the tax lien. The county does. And just like with that Sand Drive property, depending on the way things happen, the county can do the tax deed process and then, you know, we, we can lose out on that completely.
Is that why we put it off? That it gives it, I mean, if we started this, let's say, I know it's been dilapidated for three or four years. At what point does it kick in and say, "Hey, now we can care about it"?
I would, I would say with this one, there was two factors. One is we spent a significant amount of money to raise 2100 Northwestern and in the process of doing that, we didn't want to allocate another $25,000 to raise a residential property when we are already taking care of one of the biggest issues at a very significant cost. The other one has just been some of the legal issues with the Medicaid lien, which again, like I said, we figured out how to address that, but then the owner passed away. I think he passed away two years ago. He, I mean, he passed away a while ago and so it was, it was just the process and honestly just allocating money to do that.
So I guess how do we avoid it in the future? I mean, are our ordinances not strict enough? How do we not get to this point or is it just part of being the city?
It's the money thing. The ordinances exist. It's just a money thing. We have to have money earmarked.
Hi, Mark.
Hi. This isn't, isn't just purely money and the rest of it. We've been, with inspection, the chief gave a time period of five, nine years. That was their involvement. We've been actively working on this about three. The first year, we worked with the individual. He had abandoned the house, moved up into the Oshkosh or Appleton area and just walked away from it. He left a mess outside, he left a mess inside. So hoarding condition. We became aware of the, how bad it was when the, because he walked away from it and then didn't turn and have any heat on in the property, the water mains burst and we did an inspection based on an emergency condition type situation. We worked with him for about a year. He did clean up the exterior of the lot. He wanted to be able to try to sell the property to someone to flip it. We gave him that opportunity. When it wasn't happening, about that time, we went looking for him and discovered that he was now deceased. We pursued with Ian the inquiry on the tax lien for the Medicare. We also did, besides doing that research, we actually called the sister of this individual and see if the family was willing to do it. We have no one at that point, when she walked away from it, that we have no one to actually go and issue a notice. We posted the property as unoccupiable. It's got, at that point, it's two years into it, has, has no heat for two cycles. We don't know if it's even safe to enter, to be perfectly honest, at that point. We started exploring with, with Ian to actually go for both an inspection warrant because at that point... at that point, we still don't have grounds. It's not 50% of the value, it's 50% of the structural value for the, for the repairs. That's a lot harder measure to, to prove. It's not the cosmetics, it's, you know, it's not the, even the, the roof condition at that point, it's the roof structure, the joists and the rest. So at this point, we're at, at a point with, we're going after to, with no one to go after, and we would have to invest. We did make a request last year's, in last year's budget, to allocate money for this type of thing. Whether it was this one specific or not, choice was not to go forward and allocate that money, and by the time we reached this point, or beginning of this year, that's when it was discovered that this was going to be on the December list for the sheriff's sale. And at that point, we can't recoup any of the money. The property is still posted. Whoever acquires it has to come back through the inspection department to be able to do anything with it, whether it's a raise order, or whether it's a flip to fix it at that point, and before they can get an occupancy. And we have recourse, as Ian had expressed, at that point. So it's a bottom, bottom line is, it's about a six-month delay when we finally discovered all of this, and that's why it was left for the last six months.
I, I mean, we were, well, we were, we were in the process of trying, starting to look at this, like, you know, I had had conversations about, like, how are we going to deal with this at a probate level, and, you know, what next steps should we take? And that's when we discovered the tax deed issue. So like I said, my recommendation is we wait until January to deal with this. We're going to have some discussions about what we do as far as the tax deed, because we do potentially have the ability to, you know, basically buy the property for the outstanding taxes to the other municipalities, or the other taxing entities, I mean. So that's a possibility. The other one is, we let somebody purchase it and either flip it or raise it, and that's an entirely possible, you know, I, I have, I have a private client who did that with a house in Slinger, you know? He, he bought the property, he raised it, it's now vacant land, and, you know, he bought it out of the tax deed process specifically to do that. So it's not like it's unheard of to do that, or that somebody, you know, as I, as I told Justice, I, I sympathize with this person specifically because the house next to me sat vacant for five years after we owned it. The, the person who owned it was elderly, ultimately deceased, it went into foreclosure, the pipes burst, I mean, it's, about the only thing we didn't have is the foreclosure, the, the bank put a new roof on it before it started caving in. So I, I totally understand, but somebody did flip that house, somebody did repairs, you know? So it is possible that the repairs could happen, or, like I said, if they don't, we issue a raise order and deal with it, you know, next spring.
The process, the process, to answer your bigger question, the process isn't our codes on this. We still have to go through a, a whole bunch of legal steps, and it's slightly different on every single one based on their circumstances. The one you referred to on River, on River Drive, that one had a vested owner, but it also had bank holding title, or holding mortgage over the, over the item. Neither one wanted to claim it. The bank wouldn't take title because they know we would immediately put the raise order against them. So it went back and forth for about two years on that one, before we finally said we, we have to, because that one wasn't going to go over for back taxes.
Well, including that one entered the short sale process and then ultimately got turned down.
Right.
So, I mean.
So it's the legal dance that we have to go through on all of these that, that delays it, and it takes anywhere from one to three years, depending on the situation.
All right. You looking for any other action?
I was just hoping that we could try to earmark some money for this kind of situation, because.
You can't do that now.
Be in the budget process.
In the budget process, sure. That, yeah, I just wanted, I was just making it, making a discussion item because it's a messed up scenario.
Do, do we need to direct the staff to, to budget appropriately on the assumption that we're going to have to do something?
So Mark and his team requested $25,000 to be in the budget for 2021, and, I mean, you guys know the 2021 budget process and discussions associated around there. I removed that 21, or that $25,000 from the 2021 budget. There was concerns regarding raising it eight cents, that would have raised it another cent, that would have brought it up to nine, nine cents had we budgeted those funds. But there was a lot of requests like that for funds that go into our budget annually?
Here's a concern I have in that regard. I appreciate our shortened budget thing, but I think we miss a lot of those little items don't get brought to the forefront, so we're voting at that time on a whole number, and we don't know that you really need that. Somehow, in our next budget process, we have to make sure that we're highlighting those things that, you know, sometimes get pulled out, and if you're questionable about pulling that money out, bring it to us and let us make that decision so that we're at least made aware of, hey, we need this, but.
We do make a list annually of the amounts that Kerry and I remove from the budget.
Sounds good. We got this?
Yeah.
Good?
Thank you.
All right. And move on to number eight. Ordinance to permanently zone and rezone approximately 32.9 acre land located north and east of Daisy Drive and Clearview Drive, tax key number 1120.071.0021, from RS4 Single Family Residential to RS4 Single Family Residential and NSW Nonshore Wetland, and tax key number 1120.071.0022, from TMP Temporary to RS4 Single Family Residential, NSW Nonshore Wetland, FPW Floodplain Wetland, and FWW Floodway Wetland by John Lauffer of Diamond Holdings. See, you guys miss us at Plan Commission, we do these all the time, but, Jim, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. We got to be, you know, concise with it. So tonight's ordinance request is for permanent zoning and rezoning of the 32.9 acres. This is to establish the zoning for future development of the property. This is consistent with our comprehensive plan. The environmental districts all have been identified by independent delineator, along with the FEMA study to identify the floodplain and the floodways. So we're asking council to consider the permanent zoning for Single Family Residential in this area, along with those various environmental districts.
Sounds great. Now ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Take it.
Thank you, Alan. And Model, any questions? Kayla, yes?
Jim, is this the same one that, if I recall correctly, a month or two ago, raised quite a bit of concern? They didn't like the buffer in between, or am I thinking of a different property here?
This is a stat property. The issue that we had with those is that they were actually proposing a different land use and a different zoning district. So that was requiring a land use change along with the zoning change. In this case, this is just the permanent zoning, which is consistent with our 2020 comprehensive plan already, that's been approved by council and Plan Commission.
Okay, and I'm assuming then, all those same people that had those concerns have been notified or within a certain number of feet?
Correct.
Because I haven't heard anything on this, so I assume now it's okay.
We did at the Plan Commission, I'll tell you that.
There was a lot of concern and talk about it.
So the main concern was between multifamily and single family, so as you see before you, it's all single family.
This is addressed those issues.
Correct. This is all consistent with what our current plans are.
Thank you.
Got it. Any other questions? Seeing none, those in favor sort of saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And moving on to reports. Number nine, a report by Alderman Dolnick, we're on the Model regarding the Plan Commission, and we just stole your thunder, too, so.
Come home and go home. Yeah, actually, now the next step in this one that we just approved is going to be the site plan, and that will be of concern to the nearby residents, but the good news is that the zoning is now the same as the existing neighborhoods around there, which that was good news, but we'll see how the site plan, what that looks like. Just a few other things. There's going to be a statue, a statue coming to the River Walk, a new one that the commission had to grant permission for, and the photo is pretty interesting of what that was going to look like. There was a approval in the comprehensive, where we're, I beg your pardon, we set a public hearing to change zoning in the area of Forest Avenue and Indiana Avenue for potential development, changing it from industrial to mixed use. And some interesting news, too, of, let's see, where did that one go? A change from what is currently light industrial district to single family will be set for a public hearing as well in the area of University and Decorah Road, so that, that'll be a change from industrial to single family, which is always good news.
Nice. Any questions for Alderman Dolnick?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Quick question, the Indiana and, I can't remember the cross street. Which, is that the east side or the west side of Indiana?
Indiana.
You gave an intersection.
West side.
Oh, okay, yeah. Yes, east of Forest and west of Indiana Avenue.
Okay.
Anything else? And we'll move on to number 10, a report by Alderman Burquist regarding the Airport Commission meeting. I heard you got a long one, Brett.
It's only two pages.
All right, take it away.
The last meeting of the Airport Commission was held on August 5th. There were four agenda, or items on the agenda. We first approved the minutes of the May 27th, that's the last time we met. Mark gave us a budget update. Achievements listed for 2021 were continued state funding for the Airport Master Plan, tree and brush removal program was successful, continuing, and completion of the apron repavement project. Goals for 2022 were that work with the Technical Advisory Committee to complete Phase 2 of the Airport Master Plan, continued tree and brush removal, and continue to work towards the reconstruction of Runway 1331 in the year 2023. Equipment maintenance, included costs for the Holland rotary broom that's used to clear runways, lights and bulbs, electrical gates, tree and brush removal equipment, which is important, and tractor and equipment maintenance, that's the snow removal and grass cutting equipment. We were updated on the Airport Master Plan. There's a meeting of the Technical Advisory Committee scheduled for September 30th. We also received the Airport Manager's Report. Mike Shaw provided updates on the apron and taxiway reconstruction. Equipment is in good shape with only a few repairs being needed this year. Runway 1331 is currently in the design phase, final designs this fall. Mike's looking into security cameras, and finally, we're awaiting FAA approval for a frequency change for the airport. The next meeting of the Airport Commission is scheduled for November 4th.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, and then finally, number 11, a report by Alderman Allen regarding the Downtown Bid Board.
Yeah, we had, we met, had our financial report given to us. No surprises, we're in good shape. We, the bid transportation group met twice in July. Once was a walking tour of downtown to discuss possible improvements or changes that might come about, you know, when we redo the downtown for the, for the, as part of the, the district tid. We had a report from Rob Steiner, Steiner Electric. He talked about the roofline lights, some of the issues we have with the, the lighting, how we might address those. We are going to, for a test, install a sample LED strip lighting on Husars, which does not currently have roofline lighting, but it, it did have the benefit of being easily accessible, and so that's going to be, allow us to take a look at the LED and decide how to handle an RFP for roofline lighting in the future. The bid property owner survey went out, and although it only at that time been out about a week, we were already, we had already received enough responses that we were above the expectation level for, for responses, so it was well received, obviously. There's a lot of interest. The historic district draft nomination was submitted to the State Historic Preservation Office for feedback. We got the feedback in mid-July, in July, and they were returned. City staff will submit the final nominations by mid-September, and we're anticipating a review in November on whether or not we're accepted as a historic district. And the bid board meetings, I'll remind you, are available online and in recordings on the city website. And our next meeting is September 7th, which is an open forum where we encourage the public and bid members to join and comment.
Great. Thanks so much. Any questions for Mark? Then I'll open up if there's any announcements for the good order. Yes, sir.
I'd just like to shout out to all the great thumbs out there. The mayor awards went out to all the districts, and I checked on my district, and they really did a great job, so, craters to all those out there that did a great job making our city look very respectable.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Couple of quick shout outs. One, Police Dispatcher Kim Wendelborn has, for as long as I have been on council, run blood drives at least twice a year. She's done a great job. The most recent blood drive collected 79 units of blood and will potentially save up to 237 lives. I, I think she's done a great job. Unfortunately, I can't give blood, but I would, you know, if anybody could convince me that it was a good idea, it would be Kim, and I, I think that's worthy of note. And also, I'd like to thank Amy Ajaxak. She has tendered her resignation. She's our IT Director. She is an outstanding IT Director. She is leaving to work elsewhere in government, just not ours, which is another reason it's important to do something about a salary survey. There are people we lose.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Well, I'm guessing there's no kids staying up this late, but I will be at Storytime tomorrow, tomorrow at the library, so come check it out. It'll be a good old fun time. Anything else? Seeing none, having no further business for the City Council, I'll adjourn by the call the chair.